All right, we will begin on time this evening. And I call to order the meeting of the City of Sandy Planning Commission. It's Monday evening, May twenty second, two thousand twenty-three. This meeting is being held in hybrid format, partially by Zoom and partially with people here in the council chambers. I'll give instructions later on about how the public can give testimony via Zoom or telephone when we get to that time. But right now, we want to start with roll call, see who's here.
Okay, Commissioner Wegener.
Here.
Commissioner Ramsay.
Here.
Commissioner Pullen.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Myram.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Hook. I do not see him online. And Chairman Crosby.
Here. And just a reminder to commissioners, although you're all doing it, is to ask them that you keep your cameras on. And also, it gets to those here, here in the building. Help me see who's got a comment. So you not only raise your hand, but if you have something to say, kind of wave your hand. We're trying to watch monitors and real people and everything all at once. And we don't want to delay your opportunity to speak because if you're like me, you'll forget what you were going to say. The way it's too long. But first thing, it's not even on the agenda tonight before we get the approval of the minutes. We do have some recognition to give to. Chris is looking both ways. To some of our planning commissioners. And I'm going to come down here. Is that okay if I come down here?
Yeah, yeah, you're on, you're on camera, actually, if you do it right there in front of, like, right there.
Yeah. So we want to
front of the
call us and Chris. We want to recognize you. First, I give you the, the high end recognition. How you got to. We do want to thank you for your service on the planning mission. And it was sad to see you all leave. We understand the reasons, you know, some just go on to different things. But
that's beautiful.
Get from the city. Thank you. We appreciate it.
I learned everything from you, sir. Almost five years.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
You get to keep me because I'm your city council.
Yes, I know.
Can we get, can we give him a round of applause here? Thank you very much. You guys are both wonderful on the commission too.
I thought about putting it at the end of the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hoss. All right. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. This, we have the minutes in the packet for the April twenty-four, twenty twenty-three meeting. Any corrections? Everybody saw changes, notes? Okay, seeing nothing, we'll consider the minutes accepted as presented. And then we'll move to the director's report. Is, is that the director's report that we have a meeting on June twenty-sixth or?
Yeah, you do, you do have the section before that with the opportunity from requesting the floor, but you don't have anybody online, so.
Oh, that's right.
You're fine to skip it. There's nobody.
Thinking that was something, nobody's online. So if anybody's here from the public that just wants to get, speak to the planning commission tonight on something that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity.
Yeah, we, we're not going to have anybody for that. So on my item, I did have a few small things just to bring everybody up to speed here on. So, yeah, we do, we do have a meeting on June twenty-sixth at six thirty PM, and that's going to be for the Cascade Creek mixed use development. It's seventy-eight apartment units and some office spaces just to the north of Barnstead Park to the south of Highway two eleven. So you'll be looking at that proposal on June twenty-sixth. I anticipate quite a bit of public feedback and comments on that. Well, you know, I'm not going to talk too much about it tonight just because it's going to be on that agenda, but there is information already on the project page on the website. And I'll send everybody a link to that in the next week or so, once we have everything uploaded to it. And you can start looking at that, any of that information way ahead of time because there is a lot of information there. And then my hope is to have the packet and the staff report done by June sixteenth. So there'll be ten days between when I publish that and when the meeting occurs. I'm also, because it is going to be a, I think it's going to be like a sixty-five page staff report. I'm going to try to highlight some of the main things for you in the email when I send it, so you kind of know the main sections to look at. I think it's valid always to look at the whole staff report, but if you have limited time and you can't look at all sixty-five pages, which I totally understand, I'm going to try to highlight the pages I think that concentrate the most on. And then I'm going to try to give everybody July off. I don't have anything programmed for that meeting, and I think Chair Crosby and I already talked about trying to take at least one meeting off this summer. So I think we're going to most likely take July off. And then potentially August twenty-eighth and September twenty-fifth would be the meetings after that. I think that's all I had. I, I will add that we have, if you, if you want me to introduce people at the next item, I could do so then.
Oh, yes.
Okay. And I don't know if you have any questions for me, anybody?
How are you doing by yourself with?
Uh, it's busy. The council did approve. And I don't know if councillor Maine wants to speak to this in a minute, but they did approve a budget or tentatively approved a budget that will be officially approved hopefully on June fifth. And that would allow me to hire a planner and we would have a code enforcement officer in our department for the first time. So that's pretty exciting. But yeah, we're, we're, I'm barely floating along, but we're, we're, we're making it work.
Okay, appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, next is any report from our city council. Lay us on any.
I was going to give you the budget update. That was my first budget experience as a state house person, so it was a learning experience for me. But, you know, understanding the finances of how the city works as a planning commissioner, you know, normally, you know, dive into those things. So it was very interesting this time around within the city. We did have some extra funds available. So we, we did a couple of things. Biggest thing I think was getting the staff and people that they asked for where we could. Tell us the part that's one of them. The second was the park, making sure that we put the money aside to get the second phase of that park built here in the city. So that, and that's important because we have the money. And then we kept some of the money, probably, I think, the half million in reserve for future projects for things that we might, the city might need in the next five years. So staffing is the number one priority. I think we tried to give everything that we could give, there's a budget that we were allowed to give. And that most departments turned out pretty favorable, at least to my level. Definitely, fine department. There's a big focus in mind to make sure that telling you that we needed to be successful. And then, and then the other one was monetizing the, the return that each department gets because, as you know, with the moratorium that we have, we, we slow down some of the inbound funds and some of the work is less, so you've got to kind of balance that. So it was, it was, you know, it was tough. Some, some city council persons aren't as, you know, favorable as, as towards developments of stuff. You just have to kind of work with them and I think the end of
Is the, is the city budget an annual one or is it every two years?
Two years.
Two years.
And I would like to add that Commissioner Myram and Commissioner Lee also serve on the budget committee, so they were doing double duty for all those nights.
How is the development services funded? Is it primarily fee-based or is it, do, what's your breakdown?
The, so the building division, which is about half of the budget for development services, that's a hundred percent fee-based. The planning budget traditionally has been about fifty percent taxes and fifty percent fee-based. But with the acknowledgement of a, of a anticipated slowdown with the moratorium combined with just how much it costs to have employees at this point. It's, it's not going to be fifty fifty going forward, I don't think. And it, and it certainly isn't going to be this budget. I would think like more like thirty seventy.
Okay. Anybody online have any questions? Okay. Well, we will move ahead. We have one item of due business tonight. And that is another public hearing. It's a legislative order contact that we use. And this is one where our job is to make a recommendation to city council. So that, we will open the public hearing at six forty-one PM. This is file twenty-three dash zero one one. The transfer state transportation system plan. Any abstentions from any planning commissioners? Okay, nothing seen, any conflict of interest other than we all use transportation at one form or another? Okay. And that will jump us right into the staff reports.
Yeah, and I, I won't belabor this. I was just going to introduce some people that are here and kind of let Ria take it away with the, the presentation. So we had two employees with DKS Associates who has been our consultant on this project. Doc, who's on, online, so you might see, I mean, he's raised his hand, and Ria sitting to my left here. And then we also have Ryan with the Public Works Department, and he's been very instrumental and very involved in this project as well. And one of the really important parts about including public works as much is the TSP is more of a planning level document, but public works is really the one that is going to have to kind of carry it out and make the projects a reality and then also maintain all the improvements. They're more vital than me in this process, to be quite honest. I'm kind of sheep herding it through. And then, just so you know, we don't have our attorney on the line tonight, as this is only a recommendation. So he has the night off, so just so you know, so Ria.
Thank you, Kelly. Bear with me while I share my screen.
And we'll have you give your name and address.
Oh, yes, I understood. Ria Plisakowski. Oh, gosh, our office just moved. You're going to make me remember.
It's fine. Well, I can get it.
I can give you the old one.
She ain't looking up.
Yeah.
It's downtown Portland. How's that? Nine seven two oh five.
We have it on file.
I know. I should know by heart. Kind of embarrassed, I didn't. No one's asked me yet. Oh, hold on. A bunch of stuff just covered on, but.
Yeah, on the Zoom, yeah.
I was going to put that there and then I'm on my slideshow and I'm coming. All right, can everyone see that? Okay. All right, well, as you guys know, this is planning commission hearing tonight, and I'll be presenting the draft transportation system plan that we have it as of now, and I'm hoping at the end of the night, you recommend adoption and moving it forward to city council next month. So with that, a pretty short agenda, I'm going to go over the process of that we've been following the last few years on this. And then I'm going to go through the projects with you. So let's just jump right in. A little bit of background. Why are we updating the TSB? I think that's a good question because you do have one. But it's been a while. Your current TSB was adopted in two thousand nine, so we're just about fourteen years old right now, which is getting pretty old for a transportation plan. So this document will be extending the planning horizon year out twenty years to that'd be the year twenty forty-three. And then you guys have been really busy. There's a lot of recent related transportation plans or element, plans that have transportation elements that need to be incorporated as well. So we've also done that. The Sandy Transit Master Plan is just a few years old. You've also updated your Parks and Trails Master Plan. There's a downtown walkability assessment that we helped the city finish last year. Also, a circulation plan for Junkers, the Junker Street area downtown. We had helped the city with that a couple of years ago. And then the US twenty-six bypass feasibility study was done about a year, year and a half ago. So all of the recommendations and elements from those plans are folded into this for consistency. And then also, we wanted to make sure that we're incorporating current community input to help us prioritize what those futures investment should be. And also making sure that we're coordinating with your cop plan update that you're working on right now that envisioned Sandy twenty fifty, so we've been coordinating with them as well. And then some other reasons for the update, we want to make sure we're addressing the increased congestion on US twenty-six that's occurred the last fourteen years. And also evaluating the need for alternative mobility targets on the highway at the twenty-six, at the US twenty-six intersections. And we want to make sure we're providing a strategic investment plan, making sure that our priority improvements have reasonable funding. And also make sure that we're accounting for rising infrastructure costs. I'm sure everyone here knows, I feel like even the last couple of years, costs have like doubled if it feels like it. So our plans only as good as getting some new numbers in here, so we're, we know we have a reasonable funding path forward. We also want to make sure that we can support the city in any future grant funding opportunities. A lot of grant applications will ask, is this in an adopted plan? Is this project? And if you can say yes, that's, that's worth a lot. So we wanted to make sure that you have a recent plan because there's a lot of money coming out, and I know Kelly knows too, that puts you guys in a really good position to be successful when you go out for grant money. And then lastly, I'm making sure that we're implementing the development code and that it's consistent with the TSP findings. So a little bit of the project schedule, I'm not going to go all the way back to when we started, but I thought this captures at least the last, man, like nine months of work that we've been doing. So we started getting some more momentum back in September twenty twenty-two. That's when we started working on the draft TSP project list. If you recall or attended the Future Fest, the transportation, the TSP had its own transportation table at that event, and I attended. Ryan was there too, Kelly was there too. And we got to talk to a lot of people that night and get some input. In October, we had our third advisory committee meeting. And we also had an online survey that was open to the public, I believe, for three weeks. And then in November, we had a joint planning commission and city council work session. And then in December, we started working on edits that we, from feedback, we had heard from all of those meetings to that draft TSP project list. And then in January and February, we went away for a little bit and started working on the document. And then in March, we had the first draft of the TSP, it was reviewed by the city staff here. And then we had again another joint planning commission and city council work session last month, if you recall. And then we made another version of the draft TSP is what you have in front of you tonight. And then in last week, we had our final advisory committee meeting. They provided some comments, which I'll, I'll get to in a little bit. And then tonight, we're having this hearing here with you. And then the next steps will be a final hearing version of the draft TSP that will take to the city council hearing. And hopefully get adopted next month, and it's scheduled on June
twentieth.
Twenty, okay. So any questions on the schedule? No? Okay, I'll just keep going. I just wanted to give a brief update or a reminder of the public outreach that we've done. So we did have focused input based on the needs and our priority solutions. We had an online survey. The first one was in September twenty twenty-one. And we had a great response, it's over four hundred. And then we did another online survey that was much more targeted in October twenty twenty-two. And then, as I had mentioned, we also attended that Future Fest in September twenty twenty-two with over a hundred tenants. So I, I feel like we've had a lot of public input that's really shaped the projects and the programs that are in the, the TSB that we're presenting tonight. And I just wanted to do a quick reminder, I grabbed two of the questions out of community survey, one that I thought were most impactful in the draft TSP. The first question being what type of issues is most important to address? And as you can see, congestion came in number one, right behind it, safety. And then a bit further down, livability, then funding, then connectivity. And then we also asked what mode of travel is most important to address? And then there you can see, driving is clearly the winner. And then after that, walking transit's down a little bit more and then biking and then freight. And then I also grabbed from that online survey number two. We asked people to prioritize their top projects out of the, the project listed maps that we have provided. So the number one priority we were given was the US twenty-six bypass. And then also looking at the DeBarker Road, Highway two eleven, crossing improvement. Comments both crossing vehicle and walking crossing. And then the top number two priority was so, some, there's some connectivity improvements. There's actually a cluster of them kind of in the southwestern area of town. And then also some Highway two eleven minor arterial cross-section improvement. So what it would take to get two eleven up to the standard for a minor arterial. And then the number three project, again with voting, was the US twenty-six bypass. All right, so let's jump into the priorities. Unless anybody has any questions about the public engagement? No? Okay. So a little bit of a reminder, when we first started the TSP, we created nine goals related to transportation that'll help us determine what the priorities are for the city. They are in detail in the, the TSP document. This is just a high level of them, but they, they kind of cover a broad and a very broad way of looking at the city, but through transportation. So of course, mobility and connectivity, but then we're also looking at, you know, investments and funding overall community means. Are we managing the system properly? Environmental, environment is concerned. Transit was a goal, making sure we're looking at safety and then equity and health, again, which all, which all can be influenced by, by decisions for the transportation system. And then I'm just going to give a very high level of the process that we went to to get to where we are tonight. So when we first started the TSP, we did a very detailed inventory of the existing system looking at, you know, driving, walking, biking, transit, freight, safety, a lot of data. And then we start looking to the future transportation system and seeing, you know, what are the gaps in the system? What are the deficiencies? You know, are we having concerns of any of those modes? And then looking at that, we step back and we start with your twenty eleven TSP of that project list. We remove any projects that have been completed. And then we, the ones that are remaining, we either decide, yep, this is a good project, we're going to keep it. Or maybe we need to make a revision. It's not quite what we need. Or do we need to add new projects to make sure that we're addressing those feature gaps and deficiencies that were identified? And then once we have our big, long list of transportation projects, we take the goals and evaluation criteria that we developed for each of them and just measure them all like. So is this project advancing our safety goal? You know, yes, no, a little, a lot. We have a big spreadsheet that we put together to kind of come up with an initial prioritization of how all of those TSP projects are moving the needle towards advancing our goals. And that's how we came up with our initial prioritization. And then through input with the public and with the joint work sessions and with our advisory committee, there was some, some massaging of that. And that's really where we're at tonight with our prioritization projects that I'll be presenting to you guys in a little bit. And with that, no surprise, there is a shortfall in funding. We cannot afford everything that we would like to do. So that whole process that I just described, all of the projects come up to seven hundred and ten million dollars. But yeah, the caveat is, you know, over half of it, three hundred and ninety million dollars is the bypass itself. And the rest are other projects throughout the city. So just looking at the projects that we deemed a high priority, that's fifty-seven million. And then looking at what we think is going to be the available funding for transportation after we take out expenses and maintenance is ten point eight million dollars. So that's really what we're tasked at spending or identifying. So what the TSP does is it takes all of the projects, the seven hundred and ten million dollars, and puts them into two funding packages. Package one is what we call the financially constrained project list. Those are projects that we feel confident could be funded in the next twenty years with that ten point eight million dollars. And then package two is what we call the aspirational list. It's everything else that's, that's left over, the seven hundred million dollars. And I will say, you know, we don't have a crystal ball that's perfect. We've tried to be very thoughtful in what the high priority projects for the city are, which ones might be done with development that we feel would be coming. Or maybe some things have some grant opportunities. ODOT has also made some comments on what they might be willing to, you know, no promises, be able to invest in on the highway as well. So with that, I was going to walk you guys through the projects that we currently have on that financially constrained project list, which we're identifying as the highest priorities for the city. And see if you guys agree. And I know we went over these at the joint work session last month too, so. So there's two pedestrian projects, just under two million dollars total. One of them is on three hundred and sixty-second, constructing some sidewalk infill up towards the north from Chinup to Industrial Way. And this would help provide a low-stress pedestrian network and provide access to the shopping center. You know, all the shopping that's right at three sixty-second. So it's not inexpensive. It's a million dollar cost. And we think it'll primarily be funded by some developers because there's quite a few undeveloped parcels around that section. And also SDCs that would be collected over the next twenty years could help fund that as well. And then the second project is Bluff Road. Again, some sidewalk infill up on the northern part of Bluff. There, it would just be, I believe, the west side of the road, and it goes north of the high school all the way up to the John's Red viewpoint. And that is eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. And I know that one came up and was massaged a little bit through our last joint session. So this is the location that we agreed on after that last meeting. So any questions about the two sidewalk infill projects? No? Okay. And then we have quite a few roadway crossing projects, approximately one point three million dollars. I will say, all of these are on the financially constrained project list because Kelly is very confident that they will be awarded from a Safe Routes to School grant, grants plural, that the city has applied for. I know we didn't win last cycle, but you were told.
I was told we were all but very, very high chance of being successful this time around.
Yeah, which is great. So I won't read through all of these, but you can see they're right around the middle school and the elementary school. They're all, yeah, safe routes to school crossing projects. They involve things such as just striping the crosswalk, putting up the appropriate signage. Some of them have the installation of rectangular rapid flash and beacons. You know, you push the little button and it flashes when the kids cross the street. Some of them have curb ramps, curb extensions to make the crossing shorter and, and help the visibility of kids crossing the street. Some of them have pedestrian scale, uh, street lighting, tactile domes, a, a bunch of things. And it's a mix of all those depending on the location and what the requirements are for those.
Majority of these items were identified in the Safe Routes to School plan that we did about three years ago with it was, it was funded by ODOT and it was done in coordination with the school district and city staff and ODOT staff, of course.
Yeah, so these, we did not change any of these projects. We just took that study that everything had agreed on, and we just incorporated them and we're showing them as reasonably funded because of the grant opportunity. So. Any question on those?
Yeah, one, one question that was in my notes. It's more of a technical thing because it pops up and I look for it. What is CRMS?
Oh.
There's, there's nowhere that it's defined.
Cedar Ridge Middle. Thank you. It's the name of the school, but if it's not defined, then we can definitely, Doc's listening, had that to report if that wasn't clear. Sorry, yeah.
The, the
And then Sandy Great School. Yeah, we're trying to save some letters and text in the table, but that's, that's But that's, that's a very good comment. Thank you. I don't want any acronyms that are confusing.
Couple other acronyms, acronyms that I couldn't find that I'll mention when I see them.
Okay, thank you. Alright, let's jump into motor vehicles. So there's ten driving projects, right around seven million dollars. Let's see, US twenty six at three hundred and sixty second drive. This is making some modifications to that intersection. That's related to the North Lake that's going in right now. Reduce congestion for the westbound left turn. Some minor widening on the south leg. But this is currently funded, so that actually does not come out of the ten point eight, but we want to note it because it doesn't exist yet. Second project, D six is Highway two eleven at Proctor, the northbound approach modification. So this did come up. This is a project that would re-stripe the northbound approach to clearly indicate where the stop bar is. It sounds like right now the stop bar is pretty close and large vehicles have a hard time turning there. So this is a pretty inexpensive fix. We put fifteen thousand dollars to redo the striping on that intersection. Project D nine is Highway two eleven, Debarco, multimodal intersection improvements. And yeah, we've talked about this one quite a bit too, and this one was really popular. This location came up a lot at Future Fest and in online comments. So this would be taking a detailed look at that intersection to determine what the appropriate intersection control should be. I must say, right now, we're not sure. I mean, always stops, but there's issues with the, the grade and that there's snow, you know. But does a roundabout work better? It's pretty sloped, maybe not. Or is it a traffic signal? There's kind of pros and cons to all of those and there's really not a clear solution. So this sets aside some money when we know what it needs to be so that we could get there and, and we could make some improvements. And I will say, just recently, the city set up a separate funding mechanism for this intersection through development. So you're currently collecting a cost per trip from new development that adds trips to that intersection. And all that money is going to help fund this two hundred and seventy thousand towards this intersection. And there's been one development that's already paid.
They haven't paid yet, but yeah, they're contributing to this.
Conditioned to. Yeah, the development that'll be filling in Debarco all the way to twenty six.
Bull Run Terrace.
Oh yeah, there you go, Bull Run Terrace. Yeah, so, so that should happen sooner than later because we have an active funding mechanism that's coming in for that.
What's the percentage for like the study versus the rest that would go to it?
Well, the studies actually, and I know I put these in numerical order, but the studies, so the study is actually
Okay, yeah.
D twenty seven, so we have fifty thousand dollars put aside to figure out what we need to do.
So all two seventy would go.
Yeah, and then two seventy is just what we're thinking construction cost. But of course, if it ends up being the million dollar roundabout. We don't, you know, without knowing what it is, it's hard to put a dollar sign in it, but at least we could get something going there. Let's see, D fourteen A and D fifteen A are both the Bell Street and the three hundred and sixty second Avenue extensions, which are funded. Again, we just want to make sure they're in here as projects. Jumping to D twenty, this is Debarco at US twenty six. Opposite Vista Loop West. So extending Debarco Road to twenty six West, which is expected to be constructed as part of the Bull Run Terrace as well. Let's see. And then D twenty one F Village Boulevard Extension. So out of all the local street extensions that we have on the map down in that southwest area, this is the one that we thought would be most likely to happen, given its proximity to, to where development's occurring. So this would connect the Village Boulevard between Cascadia Village Drive and Juniper Street, and it would be built to collector standards. Well, that's a eight hundred and seventy five thousand dollar extension. Highway two eleven, roundabout at Gunderson. Which is also something that's probably happening sooner than later. We, we just helped the city do a study here. Trying to figure out what the best control or intersection configuration should be there. You know, the city has a timeline of when they need to get that done based on the conditions of approval from the development to the north of there on Gunderson. So we, and a contribution, a financial contribution. So I think the city's working right now with a civil firm to determine what the best solutions there could be. We had identified a roundabout and, but we're trying to make that financially feasible. So, but that right now is the, the plan is to put the roundabout there. Uh, the next project, D twenty seven. So again, yeah, this is Highway two eleven at Debarco, just to conduct the fifty thousand dollar study to determine what's, what's going to be feasible there. And then the last project, we could not afford the entire bypass in the financially constrained project, but the, through the joint work sessions with Planning Commission and City Council, we were asked to put aside some money to at least keep that planning process moving forward because it is a priority for the city. So this project, D thirty one, is that preparing what the next steps would be evaluating alternatives. You know, there's a whole environmental impact process that comes with that. So we set aside a million dollars for that. So any questions on the driving projects? No, no one's online, sorry, sorry. Okay, okay, anything? This is the most, this is the most expensive package, this, these two pages?
Yes. Oh.
No? Okay, we always come back to, something pops in your head. There's three safety projects that we've identified. One is a US twenty six adaptive signal system. So extending the system that you have downtown right now, from Orient out to Reuben. And what that does is it can really improve the performance of how the traffic signals function on the system. It monitors in real time. So say it's Memorial Day weekend and everyone's coming back from the mountain. It'll know it's not a typical Sunday and it'll make some adjustments to, to really maximize the efficiencies of the, the traffic signals. And we have that being funded by ODOT, two hundred thousand dollars. The second project's US twenty six at Ten Eyck Road. This was something that came up, I believe, from a city council member, but, but looking at if there's any mitigations that mean to be made right there, there's a lot of business accesses, excesses on Ten Eyck, just to the north. So we put aside fifty thousand dollars there to, to look at that and see if there's something that we could be done to help the operations and safety right there. And the last one, US twenty six, a speed zone study. So conducting a study from Ten Eyck out to the east, just, but just within the city limits. Taking a look and seeing if there are any appropriate safety countermeasures that are needed. Our collision data does show that there's quite a few collisions and with some severity out to the east along the highway. So this puts aside seventy five thousand dollars so we could do a speed study out there. And this is preliminary funded by ODOT, something we'd have to work with ODOT to bring it to implementation. That one was mentioned quite a bit too, through public comment and through the joint work sessions about that. So, any questions on the safety projects? And they're an affordable three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars and hopefully paid for by ODOT, so.
Yeah, the speeds on study east of downtown has been mentioned a lot in land use currents as well, if you remember. I know Jerry's probably a member, but I know it was mentioned in some stuff on, off of Vista Loop and also Bull Run Terrace and stuff down Lang and Sam. So it keeps coming up, not only through the T S P public outreach process, but every time we get a new project kind of east of the downtown, that way it comes up. So I think it's prudent to look into and see if we can resolve some of those issues out there i- in the future.
Yeah, maybe get the posted speed down. There's a lot of things we gotta look at, median. Alright. Oh, and here's just a map of the financially constrained projects. I just threw it in here in case you guys had any questions. I know you have the draft T S P and you can see it too, but it shows all the crossing projects. Mostly around the two schools. You can see the safety projects. The adaptive timing, the speed study we just talked about and the one at Ten Eyck. Well, intersection projects that we've talked about, some sidewalk infill. Any questions at all? Keep moving.
Just one observation on, on the maps, as I look through it. Several of them have a missing key or the legend.
Oh.
Like the, the urban growth boundary is, look, is, is mentioned on this one, the city limits isn't. And then there's several that don't have anything. And because for a while, as I was flipping through those, I was trying to figure out what that gray area was. I kind of knew, but I wasn't sure. Until I finally landed on one on a map like this. Oh, okay, that's what I thought it was.
Okay, thank, yeah, that's good. And funny, this, okay.
Consistent legend on the maps.
Much appreciated. And this one, yeah, I would say it has city limits, but it's down. It should probably be up by where the urban growth boundary is, just for consistency. Okay. Thanks. Oh, and I didn't want to forget transit, so I did add them. So the T S P does share the transit projects that we're bringing forward from the Sandy Transit Master Plan. But all of these are funded separately. So these do not come out of the ten point eight million as part of the financially constrained project list. But I didn't want to lose sight of them tonight. So you can see there's quite a few local service improvements, electric buses. I mean, a lot of things that really help the transportation system plan. Like I said, transit's just separate from some of our funding. But the last two are pedestrian improvements, either connecting to a transit center. There's also some, just adding some traffic calming and some crosswalks. But those are included as Project C one, C three and C four in the T S P. They're not financially constrained because they don't have designated funding. But I just wanted to make sure you guys knew we had incorporated all the transit projects. If they fit within like the crossing projects, we incorporated those as well, just so that we don't lose track of them. If Kelly's in a public meeting and needs to know that there's a crossing project that they're included in here as well, so. Any questions on transit? Yeah, alright. I did want to share with you guys that we did have our final advisory committee meeting, number four, last week. And we did receive some comments from Clackamas County that were not incorporated prior to you guys getting your packet. But based on the comments from the county, I'm going to be recommending some edits before the packet goes to city council. So I wanted to share them with you guys, just so you know that we plan on making some changes to the, to what you guys have. The first one was, we were going to add some text to page twenty two. And again, these are straight from the county's comments that I thought were, they were really helpful comments. They had asked that we note that as a city of Sandy Crows, it's anticipated that the city and the county will coordinate regarding some jurisdictional transfer of roadways as appropriate. And that is true. I mean, a lot of these are county roads on the fringe and as development occurs, it would be likely that the jurisdiction would transfer to the city. So we'll just add a sentence to note that, to provide a little context on page twenty two. And then also on that page, acknowledging that in figure eight, the motor vehicle projects, there are several projects that go outside both the city limits and some even go outside the U G B. So we do want to make sure the reader of the T S P understands that that would only occur with the U G B expansion. And also some city annexation that would happen with that as well. So again, just, it's just text, but making sure that the reader of the T S P understands there's a process for that. I don't want them to think we just get a road outside the U G B because that's not allowed in Oregon.
I was going to say that second comment was the most, like, I think all these are really good comments, but the second one's really applicable because it can't even be a city road legally without it being in our U G B. So it was a really good point of clarification.
Yep. And then on page fourteen, adding some text, just acknowledging the Mount Hood Express route and how it provides an important connection to Timberline Lodge, which is a really important connection for you guys. And then also on page sixty five, there's a little section on recreation congestion. They had asked that we mention the work around the vision around the mountain. That is a transit study that's happening up now in the government camp area. And just mentioning that that's happening and that it would be coordinating with the transit investments along all of twenty six, because you guys likely could be impacted by that as well. Then to have the, the Mountain Head Express stop that goes up there. So, so just those four text edits, we're going to add a little bit of clarity. So any questions on those? No? Okay. And this is Darcy's slide, but I'm, she was on our team. She's the code expert that I work with on a lot of T S Ps, but I'm going to handle her slide tonight. Just to let you guys know that there will also be some modifications to your development code. Making sure that we are eliminating discrepancies between the code and anything that's coming in this updated T S P. We want to make sure they have the same language, the same verbiage, the standards are consistent, any numbers that are in the T S P are consistent in the development code. Also making sure that we're implementing some more multimodal objectives and recommendations. Eliminating vague and subjective language is always good in your code. I know that's been an issue in the past. So, you know, clear and defensible is a goal there. And ensuring future development is supported by the planned transportation system. So I know Kelly's been working with M I G and they have some proposed code language or red line strikeout code modifications that go with the implement of the T S P. But then the, the last bit is important for you guys to know is that there will also be transportation related S D C amendments that are coming. And we'll be coordinating those. You guys are working on some housing related other modifications too right now to the code. So those will be packaged together. And the city is planning on having all of those code amendments ready for, for Planning Commission and City Council review probably in the fall. Probably late summer might be too soon.
I think the beginning of September actually is our goal. That's our.
That's your goal?
That's our goal.
Okay, yeah, so you will be seeing proposed system development charge updates in front of you in a couple months. And with that, I think that's my last one. So any, any other specific questions? And you had comments about undefined acronyms?
Yes, not in your presentation, but somewhere in, I think, was S G C.
Oh.
S G S would be Sandy Grade School, but.
Was it in that same table?
I'd have to find it. And one I know you can, you can locate because of main page was H C M.
Oh, that's the Highway Capacity Manual that we use for things. So yeah, we'll make sure we spell that out too. Sorry. Sure, yeah.
What was the other one, Jerry?
S C G is, or S G C.
That I don't know, but I'm sure we can do a text. Let me know the pager. Well, that's what I wondered, is it Sandy Grade School? But is it type? Well, that's why I'm wondering if it was in that crossing table.
It may have been in the appendix too.
Oh, okay. Okay, I know Doc's writing this down, so.
Yeah, it's hard, hard to do a search and find on a PDF.
On a PDF, yeah.
Impossible. I have a couple, a couple other comments. I'll go ahead, well, others I didn't. I noticed some of the, not outside of the financially constrained ones, one thing that caught my eye was and I guess you would call those proposals in the, the other projects. I mean, they've been given thought. And one was the elimination of parking along some streets to allow for bike circles. And I'm just curious how we weigh eliminating parking for forty or fifty homes for the five bikes that ride down that road in a day.
That's a great question. Do you know which projects they were? Because I think they're all a little different. I know the ones where it's on-street bike facilities that is part of a trail that came out of the Parks and Trail Master Plan. Those, since the trail plan is adopted, we just incorporated. So we did not take, you know what I mean, like a fresh look on those. We just incorporate them as is. But some of them could just be standalone roadway projects. Like we've talked about it a lot on Highway two eleven.
Yeah, well, the one that caught my eye, I'll be honest, it's my street where I live, on Debarco. And I'm looking, trying to see if I can find it. And I, I did see the, the S G S. And that may have been what I had seen. Sandy Grade School.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can, I can jump in on those bike projects. I think the, there's quite a few of them where the costs that were developed in the prior T S P or, or the existing T S P were based on just a re-striping and with, without widening. So I, I think the project description clarifies that it's, the, the cost is a re-striping cost. Widening would result in a higher cost, but that was definitely a consideration that, that came up. And none of those bike projects were identified as, you know, financially constrained or, or high priority, partially because of that. Lack of right of way and, and higher cost because of that.
And these are all collectors, aren't they? Yeah.
Yeah, I found them on, it's on page thirty four.
Yeah, I can share.
The, the section where, where I live and I'm not just picking because I live just because I'm familiar with it. The Barco Sandy Heights to Melissa Restrike, the cost assumes that the roadway is not widened and parking is removed. And it's just, that's a significant distance of road. He's just, if, if we were to try to do that, we would definitely get pushback.
Yeah, I don't see that project probably moving forward anytime soon.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, you could, you could. So I, I just saw it. You guys really, were you thinking of these things, you know, when the, I mean, it's good. And I looked at it too, and I thought, oh yes, because of where they are in the budget, they're not going to happen. But you and I know that, but somebody else picking this up and you say, hey, you know what they're going to be doing? You know what they want to do?
Well, and then the intent is that collectors and higher in the city provide because of their speeds, posted speeds, and because of the, the volumes that they carry per day. For a bicyclist to feel safe, they would need to have a dedicated bike lane. But you're right, of course, the trade-off is keeping it curb to curb, as Doc said, and keeping the cost down. It's removing the parking and replacing with the bike lane. If it came to an actual funded project, yeah, we would have to have a pretty deep conversation about that. Are we giving up parking? Is it one side of the street or not? Are we widening to keep both? There's a lot of trade-offs discussion down the go with that.
You've opportunity for other comments.
I was just curious, you had mentioned that I think the, the priorities do a really good job of matching up with kind of community input. But you, we also had those nine priorities and you said you evaluated those. And I was just curious as to the outcome of that evaluation. And if any of those nine priorities, if we didn't get there or are we kind of?
Oh, you mean the goals?
Yeah.
Well, they all help. It's a bit subjective. So we go through each, and I don't have it in front of me, but so for each goal, we try to come up with some evaluation criteria, like for safety. Does it reduce the number of overall collisions? Or does it reduce, you know, fatalities? And then when we go through with the projects, and again, Doc, you might have to remind me, but usually then we kind of rate them from, you know, plus one, plus two, minus, does it make it worse? Is it neutral? Or does it make it better? And then we sum all of them up and that gives us kind of our initial prioritization. But you're asking like, how different was our initial prioritization maybe to what we have in the TSP now, or just more general, how are we doing against the goals?
All the goals and I'm looking at things like, you know, equity as we go through there, you know, are you, as we said it as a goal, is that something that we're actually needing? Are we making sure that we give a prioritization to maybe, you know, neighborhoods that don't have a high, like those types of things?
I mean, I, I can speak to that a little bit. I think based on the high percentage of free and reduced lunch, lunches at Sandy Grade School. I think if you do want to look at this through an equity lens, I think the Safe Route to School programming and allowing those kids to properly walk to school and walk even maybe not to school, but like from the school to their parents' vehicle or to the bus or whatever, I think that's going to be very important in, in the futures to move forward with the Safe Route to School infrastructure improvements around both Sandy Grade School and around Cedar Ridge Middle School. Those are some of the areas that if you look at our community development block grant funding, which is for lower income neighborhoods, that's where, that's some of the neighborhoods that's benefited from it is the same area that we're looking to do at Safe Route to School program. And then I think from like, I think Safe Route to School, if, if you look at our, and we have it on our website, if you look at the study we did, I think a few of the things that you also really get with that is safety. You know, making it more safe for kids to walk to and from school and then also health, you know, you're helping the kids kind of understand the importance of walking and getting out and not just using a vehicle for every time they have to go somewhere or so.
And I just wanted to add that we did look at some of the available census data with equity considerations. And I think that summarized in Tech Memo 1 in the appendix, one or, one or two. But there's some figures in there with some equity metrics.
And I, I think, I think another project that's really, the equity lens is, I think, a really important thing to look at, Commissioner. So I'm glad you brought that up. I think another one that could produce a lot of equity benefits would be the Ten Eyck Wolf Drive Study and Improvements. Because there are quite a few affordable housing to the south of that intersection. So I, I do think that's a really important intersection to kind of study and make sure that we make it safer going into the future.
Yeah. Well, I was going to add too, I think we can touch on all of these, even just for my financially constrained projects. System management is definitely the adaptive signal project that I talked about, a thing where you can make a lot of improvement for a low dollar amount by just managing the system, not just widening or building new. All of our roadway projects and the sidewalk infill are connectivity projects, right? Making it easier to get around the city without relying on the highway. I mean, that one came up a lot. The whole TSP is about capital investments and funding, right? And making sure we're being pretty diligent with our public dollars. Transit, of course, is involved. Yeah, you had mentioned health, right? I mean, that comes hand in hand with, with the safety piece and the connectivity piece. Environmental is probably a little more just in the back, but definitely looking at topography and creeks and all that, that has to be considered before we lay out any sort of infrastructure or Ryan can't build it and take care of it. So that's definitely the, you know, a criteria that we need to look at too. So I would say, yeah, the projects that are that we're saying that we're going to fund the next 20 years, definitely push the needles on all of these in some way or another. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, great question.
I had a question on the second to the last informational slide.
Sure.
The final one was thanks, the one before that.
The code, yeah.
Yes. The eliminating the discrepancies between the Sandy Development Code and the TSP. Where does the give come on that from the, the development code or from the TSP? Or do you, do they work together to kind of get the language to where it needs to be? Or does one have priority over the other when it comes right down to it?
That's a great question. So as I see it, and it could be because I'm the transportation consultant, I think that TSP language was what we started with. And then we went back to see if the code was consistent, what was in the TSP. Since the TSP is right in front of us right now, and it's the newly adopted document, but mostly it was little things like, is it a pathway or is it a trail? We got to call it the same thing, right? Or is the stand, like we've updated some standards, the local street standard width was wide in the foot or two. So we want to make sure that the code is addressing that as well. So really it's taking the draft TSP right now and making sure the code is consistent with it.
Code language. Yeah. I just was wondering.
Uses the code.
No, it's a great question. I, I, I think sometimes unfortunately, when you do these great master planning projects, that last really important step is to make sure that the development code, which we're implementing, right?
Yeah.
Is consistent with the TSP. And unfortunately, sometimes that kind of gets lost, honestly. And so you have a development code that doesn't actually match what's in the TSP. So it's really hard to ever implement the TSP if your development code doesn't say the same thing. So I think last time when they did the updates, my predecessor did a pretty good job of getting most of the TSP changes into the development code. I think there was like one or two that never got incorporated because there wasn't a lot of, there wasn't necessarily a lot of support for them. But I think he did a pretty good job of getting all those things implemented. So we're trying to make sure that that's carried again through this time around as part of the clear and objective of it.
Great question. Very philosophical.
Yes, another question I had. Figure 13, which is page 56 of the attachment A. According to, I picked it up somewhere. Conceptual local street connectivity needs are partially shown. I guess, I guess the operative word is partially in figure 13 and the appendix. I couldn't find any appendix. Where I was getting was, where I was thinking was the old transportation plan, I think, had, had more conceptual of local streets. It kind of, you know, I mean, why did we stub off Melissa at the top? Well, because we kind of knew that there would be something over there in the future. And looking at 13, I'm not, I see a lot of the gray area, you know, that doesn't have any conceptual. Now, maybe, maybe you can't do that. But it's just, my, my recollection is, is when developments come, we often talk, well, the transportation plan has a local street there, you know, and it's supposed to go over there and then go this direction. But I don't see any guidance for that in, in these.
I, I completely know what you were talking about. Yeah, a lot of times TSPs will have a local street, yeah, connection plan, extension plan, or just, yeah, I've, and I put those together for a lot of TSPs. Yeah, we don't have one in here. But if that is something that planning commission and staff work on, that's something we definitely can put together. What we typically do is show all the tax lots that then show all the right of ways. And then you can see where all the stubbed, little local stub streets are everywhere. And then we typically have an exercise where we go through and we just show an arrow, right? Right? Potential local street extension. If we think it can't go through because of topography or like a creek, we can always say it's a ped bike connection. But I know that's really important when you have an app, when you have a pre-application meeting and someone comes in, you can point to it and say, oh, in our TSP, this road's going through. It's not a cul-de-sac. You know, it's not any of those things that a developer wants. So you're the first one, I guess, to make a comment about wanting that in the TSP or that you like having in your current TSP. But yeah, that's something we could pretty easily put together.
I mean, it's, it's part of the planning process, you know, so the, you don't build the road this way and then wish it should have gone this way because it needed to be over there. And that's, I didn't see that.
Sure. Okay. No, yeah, that's something we could put together. I don't know if you used the one that you guys have, but.
That's, that's my opinion. Don't, just for me.
No, 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 no. As your on-call traffic engineer, I also think that's really important when they come through and you'd be able to point to that. I've won a lot of arguments with the developers when you have that in the TSP. So yeah, I completely understand. Sure. Yeah, that's something we can go through and, and have Kelly help us.
And, and, and we often have fallen back on to say, well, that's conceptual, you know, because when it comes down to it, they may say, well, it needs to be 50 feet over this way.
And it is conceptual. I think mostly the intent is you're going to make a connection somewhere in that direction, right? And then when the developer hires, hires their civil engineer, they can, you know, like you said, then argue like, no, there's a drop off and yeah, we got to move it. But as long as the connection's made and you don't get a dead end or a cul-de-sac, I think that's the most important outcome. So. Okay, that's a great comment. Thank you.
My final comment, I'm looking for anybody, any more procedural. I noticed that the proposed codes changes in the the appendix reference this TSP very specifically by the year 2023. So when does it, okay. So when we change it in 20 years from now, there's going to be a gap. And there may be right now, if council approves this next month. But our current code does not reference the 2023 TSP and it won't until if September, October. What happens during that gaps, since it's so specific that the new code says the 2023 instead of something, and I know the clear and objective is probably the answer. It doesn't say the, the current TSP adopted by the city, which would reference whatever is in effect on that day. 2023 is very specific as sometime it will expire.
Yeah, I mean, this time around, we have the benefit, well, I hate to say benefit, but to be honest, the benefit of the moratorium being in place right now. So the gap is not going to really mean anything. But you're correct.
Yeah.
In a typical year where we don't have a moratorium, which would be the hope, then you would have a gap. And so I think in that instance, you'd want to do the code edit a lot closer to the TSP. So part of the reason why we're delaying it is because we're already actually going through the entire development code and making a lot of edits. And it would get really hard actually to edit some things for this right now. And then in three months, bring it back again. That's why we decided to package it with a clear and objective. If we weren't doing the clear and objective audit right now, I would say we'd probably be looking to do the development code edits and adoption like right now as well.
Simultaneous.
Yes. And then the advice we've gotten, and I think I've shared this with the commission, I believe, is that, you know, traditionally or it used to just say the current edition or it used to just say like shall meet the transportation system plan. Didn't even say current edition. But there's been a few court cases where developers successfully won because there wasn't mention of what TSP it was talking about.
Right. I remember that. And so that's why I, I figured, that's why it says 2023 is for that very.
Yeah, one of our, one of our attorneys that used to be on staff at Burials, aren't him, he's now the DA at Columbia County Spencer. He actually lost the case in Silverton on that very thing. The developer said, you know, your code only says the current TSP. I don't know what TSP that means. Well, of course, everybody did, but because it wasn't clear what TSP they're talking about, they actually won on that ruling at a, at court. So Spencer advised me after that, I don't want Sandy to be the next one to lose. So definitely put the year, and when you adopt it again, just, you're just going to have to go through your code in a few years.
It's like the, the gap is, is, for lack of a better phrase, it's a calculated risk.
It is.
And, and given the moratorium, we think that we're safe.
The risk's very low right now. Yeah. But you're right, in a, in a more typical time where you don't have a moratorium, we'd be either looking to adopt the code amendments next month also, or like the, the month after, like right on the heels, we'd be doing it really quick.
Okay. So ends my questions.
Anybody online have any questions?
Did you want to open the legislative hearing? I don't think you're going to have anybody speak.
No, thank you.
I think you're just to cover our bases, I think we're supposed to open it.
So with all of our questions, we'll give opportunity for anybody in the public will do it just open, I'm not going to go for, given that this is legislative for proponent, opponent and, and neutral. It's just that if you are public listening in either by phone or on Zoom and you have a comment that you would like to make about what we're looking at, the, the TSP proposal. If you are on Zoom, just click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized by Kelly. If you are on a telephone, it is star nine, that will effectively raise your hand and wait to be recognized by Kelly. So we'll give opportunity for any public testimony at this time.
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. Any further questions or recap or comments to us before we'll go ahead and close and then discuss them?
Before you close the hearing. I mean, I didn't know if Ryan, did you want to say anything about the TSP or about implementation? No.
You're for it?
Yeah, I'm for it. I was really thrilled to be a part of it and but then coming to the end of a year is exciting.
Yeah, very exciting.
Fun will is only beginning.
Yes.
Yeah, I think the only other thing I'll add is I think the, you know, we'll get the code edits hopefully adopted this fall with the clear and objective audits. And then I, I think the real big thing honestly is you know, we, we spent a lot of money on 362nd and Bell. And a lot of the money that even traditionally goes to road maintenance was spent on that. So kind of determining, and I'm not saying I'm going to determine this, I'm just saying like the city as a whole determining, you know, as we replenish those funds and do our actual road maintenance, what is the project or project that we're going to take on from this list? And then I think the second part of that is really really taking a hard look at the, the work that SCS and DKS does on our SDCs and determining how much the city council will be comfortable going up on those. Because hopefully we can make that, you know, we're not going to try double it, but hopefully we can make the, the amount of money we're projecting over the next year, next 20 years a little higher than 10.8. And therefore we can add some other projects to that financially constrained list. I think that's going to be kind of the excitement to me is like through projections, how much more SCC revenue could we potentially collect? And then what other projects could we fund with that?
Yeah. And what, what grants are out there that you don't know about today? That are going to be created five years from now.
And I know that Jenny, she's been a communication specialist. So there's more to come on that.
Commissioner Lee. Commissioner Lee.
I was just curious as to what projects the city is currently funding with the license tax. That was passed a couple of years ago and how that fits into this.
Is that for the vehicle registration tax?
Yes.
I, I believe in Ryan or anybody of D K S or. Counselor, ma'am, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I thi- I think that's part of what's funding Bell and three sixty second, I believe.
That's what I, that was my answer.
Yeah, that would seem more obvious than other projects. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I think it's Bell and three sixty second. I think that project because of the. You know, the cost being over ten million dollars, I think that took up a lot of all our, but all of our funding right mechanisms, I think, for the time being. Is my understanding.
Yes.
And then some.
And that's, yes, correct. But you know, I, I don't know, from a planning perspective, I think it's a very worthwhile project, obviously. Because as we come out of the moratorium, it's, I think it's going to be a very exciting area to maybe develop commercial in the city. And it, and it's as somebody that lives in town myself, it's a very important connection, especially for everybody north of the highway. Because right now everybody bottles out to either Kelso or Bluff and there's really no other option than that. So.
Yeah. It's going to be cool to see that the. Habits change, patterns change of people's drive.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, a hundred percent agree. It's going to be very interesting.
I think the building that could occur there will be a real economic boon to the community.
Yeah, I would, I would agree.
Well, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and then we can. Move ahead and wrap things up.
Chair, move to the close of the public chair.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing at seven forty two P M. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, aye.
Okay, any further discussion otherwise? Copy the staff report, it's just a. Recommendation to. City council to. I don't want to put words in your mouth, either approve it or. Not or approve it with any comments that we had, which I know will be worked into.
Yeah.
Into the what they see.
Chair, I'd like to move that we recommend or that we. Recommend approval to city council with very few comments and conditions that we had today.
And I would second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Find what the. File number was.
It's twenty three.
Three zero one one, the T S P to approve it and send our comments on to city council. Take a roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramsay?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Myram?
Yes.
Commissioner Pullen?
Yes.
And Chair Crosby?
Yes. Motion carries. Now your word begins, Chris.
Just for the record, do, so I know Commissioner Wagner was her first on that. Who was, who was the second? I'm sorry.
I think it was Commissioner Pullen.
Early.
Lee.
Lovely, yes.
You're correct. Thank you.
All right. Well, if there is there anything else anybody has. Comment wise. Just in general, otherwise. To say the A word. We are adjourned, seven forty four. Thank you all for coming.
Thanks, everybody.
Keeping your cameras on, it's great to, great to see faces.